Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Oregon Board of Education regular meeting for the Clay High School Learning Commons on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance to our flag, and then we will follow by a moment of silence in memory of Mark Anderson, who was a longtime maintenance employee for Oregon City Schools.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call of the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Eversman.
Present.
Mr. Saab.
Present. Please silence all personal electronic devices during this meeting. A motion, please, to adopt the agenda as it's been written.
So.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Saab.
Yes. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available, as always, on the Disto website. We have quite a few folks that we want to recognize tonight. We're getting to the end of the school year, and a lot of people have helped to make this another great year for Oregon City Schools. And at this time, we'd like to recognize some individuals. And to begin that, we're going to ask for Dr. Fritz.
Thank you. Tonight, we're very honored, on behalf of the board, to recognize staff members who have chosen to retire, you know, after many years of service to the school district. We can't thank them enough for what they've done for the students, this community, and the parents as well. So, as I call your name, if you're here present, because I know some people could not be here tonight, we'd ask that you come up and stay up here. We have a certificate for you, but we'd also like to get a photo with all of you. So I'll start with the list. Holly Ann Jacobs. Karen Angst. Marcia Ruskel. Jackie Blue. Angela Cooney. Tim Holcomb. Deb Philar. Tracy, I'm sorry, Tracy Vina. Walter Ralph. Jane Fruit. Dean Sandwich. Stephanie Seeger. Michelle Gaskins. Mary Anthee. Gretchen Olinger. Don Burkhardt. And Carrie Lavon. Let's give them a round of applause.
many, many years. And enjoy the retirement. It is a wonderful thing, I have to tell you. So, again, thank you for all that you've done for Oregon City Schools. Our career tech students, who placed at state competition and qualified for national competition, well, we've got quite a litany of outstanding students. And Becky, you're going to go ahead and take it from there.
Good evening, or good afternoon, I should say. I'm here today to recognize our students in career technology and the different CTSO programs and their accomplishments at state and nationals. Our first program is BPA, which stands for Business Professionals of America, and is the student organization for our computer science program. We currently have eighteen students in BPA. There were thirteen students who competed at states, and of those twelve placed, and eight of those qualified for nationals in Orlando, Florida, and they went there on May sixth through the eleventh. I welcome Rhonda Hildebrand to announce her students for BPA.
So, as Ms. Spinn said, we had fourteen, oh, fifteen qualified to compete at the state level, fourteen that actually went, and then of the fourteen, we have seven that moved on to nationals and competed there. So, our first place winner at states this year was Preston Gibbs in computer modeling. Eighth place was Christian Shilkey. How can I say his last name? Integrated Office Applications. He also got to go to nationals. And then Andrew Ambroski. He is my return for to nationals this year. He went to nationals last year in database applications and also earned his right to go again to nationals this year. Then I have a seventh place team, administrative support team at states is River Sewell, Jane Mays, Kate Mallett, and Richard Kraslin. Unfortunately, they did not get to go to nationals. And then thirteenth was Isaiah Ken with database applications. Fourteenth was Dominic Schrader, Integrated Office, and those were our placers at states. And then we had a computer animation team, concerned of senior captain Colin Berkey, Dylan Champion, and then our juniors were Josh Campbell and Lily Fuller. We had a little pickup at states, and by the time we got everything figured out, we realized we should be qualified to go to nationals. So they did earn their right to go to nationals, and they made it to finals at nationals and placed sixth in the nation. So I'm excited with this team, because we did have a split team this year, two seniors and two juniors. So hopefully, that means the two juniors will be up here again next year, representing us once again at nationals.
Do I need to move those?
Maybe just take two steps that way.
No, wait, you forgot somebody.
Hold your spots.
Isabella, come up here. Isabella went with us to nationals. She did Python programming at the state, but then she got two industry credentials at nationals. So she is qualified in Python, and she also qualified in unity programming. So we'll try this again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our next organization is DECA. This is for our marketing program. There are currently forty-two students in DECA. Twenty-four students made it out of regionals and attended the state competition. And we had four students attend internationals this year in Orlando, Florida, on April twenty-fifth through the thirtieth. And I welcome advisor Catherine Segan to announce the competitors.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. As a DECA advisor, this year, we had a wonderful year. As Becky mentioned, we had twenty-four students attend the state competition, and some of them are here today in attendance. So I'd like to call them out real quick. So of those twenty-four students, we had Ailee Hernandez, who can come on up, and she competed in the professional selling event and focused her efforts on the Brighthouse Coffee Company across the street. So congratulations, Ailee. We also have another student in attendance here, Carter Whaley, who did a business finance role play at state competition and did a wonderful job, and hopefully has a career in his future in finance. Another student here, Tino Madrid, who attended our state competition and focused his efforts in the hospitality industry, and also has some background in the selling events as well. So he did a great job at states. And several other students who attended the state competition. Of those twenty-four that attended, we have several students who actually qualified at the state level. First of all is Carson Wilkins, who was in a team with Ian DeWitt and Ian Jedlaki, who all worked together on a sports and entertainment marketing research event, which they researched the Indy Fuel hockey team, if anyone's familiar, and they did a great job. And they actually placed seventh in the state, which was wonderful. We also had a team of three senior students, Lily Collins, Bryn Ryder, and Bryce Cullen, who worked together to make all of the sixty-three strong shirts that you all saw, the pink out earlier in the fall. They raised over three thousand dollars for the Lucas Mason Memorial Scholarship and used that as their DECA project. And they did a wonderful job with that and placed eleventh in the state at DECA states. We also have a group of three junior students who worked together to create a new business, who came up with a baseball tracking device that tracks their stats for the baseball. And that is George Edwards, Carter Wallenzak, and Shane Milliman. And they did a great job at states, placing ninth in the state. Along with that, we have two other seniors who worked together to do research on the Sundance drive-in down the road on the bar. Both of them are actually employees there at the Sundance, but did a lot of research on how they operate their business, and that is Randy Billick and Riley Hamilton. And they did a wonderful job, scoring fifth in the state. And we're really proud of them. And last but not least, in attendance here is Landon Ludrowski, and he placed fourth in the state for Startup Business Plan. He created an app that is called Alter, that is, helps customers track their health and fitness goals. And he did a wonderful job. And that fourth place got him a ticket to Orlando, Florida this year. We went to Orlando at the end of April, towards the end of our spring break. We had a wonderful time. There were four students in attendance at our Orlando, our international competition. Landon and three other seniors who are not here, but Lily Collins, Ian Jedlaki, and Remy Gallius. And we had a great time in Orlando. We went to Universal and Disney, and Landon did a wonderful job. We actually got his score back today. So we were able to look into that. And Landon also achieved the certificate of excellence from DECA, scoring over seventy percent from his preliminary competition. So we had a great time, and my students did a wonderful, amazing job this year.
Congratulations, folks.
Our third student organization is Educators Rising. This is the second year that we have had this organization, and it represents our teaching professions program. This year, we had seven students participate in Educators Rising at the state level, and four who qualify for nationals in Orlando, Florida. And they will be going on June twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. And I welcome advisor Becky Oberdeck.
Hello, thank you. We have no students in attendance tonight due to busy, busy schedules of work and track and all of the things. So I'm going to just tell you very quickly about our first inaugural time down to Columbus for our state Educators Rising conference and competitions. We took seven students, a small number, just for our first time, just to get to know the competition. And we actually were surprised and very fortunate to have four of our seven place and are going to be competing in nationals in Orlando, Florida, like Ms. Spinn said. And we're looking forward to that. So I have just a couple examples of what we do, because a lot of people say, what do you do in an educators' competition? So Jocelyn Shaw was our first place, and, well, she took a bronze. And this was her teacher-created material. She made a game called Melting Down Map. And so they had to present, she presented that, and she took a bronze. And Skylar Newhevins, she created, this is her first draft. We just actually ordered her second draft. This was her original book that she created called Hubert the Kiwi. And she illustrated and wrote her own children's book. And she took fourth at state.
Impressive.
Very impressive. And then we had two seniors team up for a public service announcement that was supposed to be trying to get teachers into the profession. And so Emma Martin and Lucy Mae Brinkman scored and received a second place at state and will also be competing in nationals for their public service announcement. So we look forward to our first trip to nationals, and thank you very much.
Will that book be going on sale? No, I mean...
We hope so in the future, yeah.
She would love to.
Well, I think...
You've got to find her a publisher.
Well, yeah. We could then publicize it on alumni websites. People will buy that book for little kids. It's beautiful illustrations.
She did all the work herself, so it's pretty...
Amazing.
FFA is our next student organization. There are a hundred and six students that are members of FFA. They have several district and state competitions throughout the year, and there were nineteen students who placed at states. And currently, we do not have anyone who qualified for nationals in October. Their advisors are Meredith Wolf and Ashley Darlik, and they are not in attendance tonight, but we do have a few students here. As we read your names, if you could please come up. Rebecca Norden. Braylon Rogers. Majestic Bedford. Jacqueline Jedlaki. Elena Matthews. And I'm sorry if I do not pronounce your name correctly. Weneth Masqueta. Jenna Huntermark. Caitlin Looner. Elena Toles. And Moose. Her dog Moose.
We're having a shaking going on.
Alicia Duran. Braylon Sheets. Declan O'Connor. Dane Mallett. Neveah Mitchell. Elena Dickens. Katie Kent. Marlon Gary. Ella Adams. And that is all. Thank you guys for coming. HOSA is our student organization for medical technologies. It stands for Health Occupation Student Association. We currently have thirty-seven students enrolled, and eighteen of those members competed at states. This year, we do not have anyone attending nationals, which would have been held in Nashville, Tennessee, in June. Our advisor is Katie Blewett, and she will be announcing her students. Or, I'm sorry, Carrie Blewett.
Katie was here before me.
Katie was here before her.
Sorry. Say it again. Right, you were close. Hi, everyone. So I just wanted to talk a little bit. I wanted to see if I had anyone in attendance, and I don't think I do. So obviously, I had eighteen students that went on to state that competed in different competitions with HOSA. HOSA encompasses all kinds of different medical interests for students, whether they're interested in dental, or physical therapy, or even nursing. We don't just keep it around nursing. We try to encourage any kind of interest that they have. So HOSA allows the different competitions. Out of the eighteen students, I had twelve of them take the anatomy and physiology test. I had a student take a human growth and development test. And then I had other ones compete in team events. One of them was medical innovation, and my students, Christiana McCourt and Lizzie Kent, placed ninth in the state. Our state competition includes about twenty-five hundred students that meet. We're in region one, so we meet at Glass City Center. So it's, it's pretty competitive. Our, our HOSA is also international. So we also include different countries, Canada, Mexico, South Korea, China, Puerto Rico, Germany, and Italy. So when we get to internationals, it's a huge, huge competition. I was lucky enough to have a couple students go last year. This year, we did not, unfortunately. But I did want to point out, I did have one student, a junior, her name is Nadia Ball. She actually scored with the anatomy and physiology test. She scored second in the state of Ohio. So I am very, very proud of Nadia. Nadia actually could have went on to internationals. What kind of happened was spring break was a little late. By the time we get back on April tenth, get everything going for fundraising and get going, we have to know by May tenth, twelfth, who's going, and we've got to have the money up. So it was kind of a little bit of pressure this year. Nadia is definitely going next year. We'll be going to Indianapolis for the international competition. So I'm very, very proud of Nadia, second place in the state. So I'm very, very proud of Nadia, second place in the state on all these kids that take this test. The only other thing I did want to mention is I did have, during the competition, I have students that actually can go on and do different activities. And I had nine students in high school that went on to try to donate blood. And I'm very, very proud of them. Due to HIPAA, I can't tell you exactly who did and who didn't. Some qualified to be able to donate blood, but every time they donate a pint of blood, it saves three lives. And I had four students that were able to donate blood. Some of them could not. But I'm very proud that I had nine students that stepped up with that big old needle and didn't mind sitting in that chair, and nobody passed out. So I'm very, very proud of them. I'm proud of all these students, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all of the great work I began for our team.
Our sixth CTSO is Skills USA. This is our largest student organization. It includes students from auto, advanced manufacturing and machining, our engineering program, ED&amp;D, construction trades, cosmetology, culinary arts, and musical theater. We currently have one hundred and seventy students in skills. Twenty-two of those students competed at the state level. And this year, we did not have anyone achieve the national level, which will be held in Atlanta, Georgia in June. Anna Skinner is the advisor, and she will be announcing her students.
As Becky said, we have a lot of students.
I didn't do it.
We took twenty-two students to state this year. And like she said, we obviously didn't have anyone place for Nationals, but most of them did place. I'm really proud of them this year. They were some great kids. And there were a lot of juniors there, so I'm looking forward to a really good year next year. Zach Conley and Antonio Giannino were, took eighteenth place in ED&amp;D. They had to create a model car that ran with a rubber band, and their car was first. They placed eighteenth. Then we had another junior, Jacob Stein, who's here, a junior in Ottawa. He placed twenty-fifth out of forty. Many of the contests had forty competitors, minimum. And then we have a team event, my open and closing team. Ethan Ackerman. Brock Steller. Pearson Leanhart. Jersey Martin. Annabelle Nagy. Aubrey Scarborough. And Marissa Yanez, placed eighth. In restaurant service, we had Emma Lowry, who placed eighth, and Hattie Ziggrey, who placed sixth. Culinary arts, Jaden McNelly, placed fifteenth. And customer service was Delaney Johns, placed fifth. And Alexander Wong, who had to create a T-shirt design for Skills Nationals, and he placed twentieth. And then we had two from Precision Machining, Andrew Devonette, who placed tenth, and Raymond Jurisky, who placed second, earning a silver medal.
Congratulations to each of you. And congratulations...
Thank you so much.
To Mrs. Spinn for the great job that she and her educators are doing in our Career Tech program. I think many of you know, we are a five-star district at Career Tech, which is as good as it gets in the state of Ohio. So we're very proud, as you can see, with these great students that you've had here today. What a great job that everyone in that area does. Thank you. For those of you who would like to head on your way, or feel free to do so, you're more than welcome to stick around and join us if you'd like. We'll move on now to the Treasurers Report. Presenting that tonight will be Acting Treasurer Jennifer Sumot.
Hi, good afternoon. We will go through the approval of the minutes, requesting approval for a one-year contract for Julian and Groob. We'll go through the Treasurers Report, which will be a little bit combined with the five-year forecast. So the five-year forecast is due in November and May of each school year. This is the second forecast for this fiscal year. And I believe Cajun is going to present that.
Well, as Treasurers, we're used to the room clearing out before a financial report, so appreciate the opportunity to go over the five-year forecast for Oregon City Schools. My name's Kaden Keating. This is Jeff Dorbush, also helping out here tonight. So we're going to go quick, because we know you guys got a lot ahead of you. So this is usually more of a ten- to fifteen-minute presentation. We're going to really try to keep it down to like real quick. But I do want to say, as we started helping out with Mr. Palatin's group and helping out Oregon schools, which is our neighbor districts, for Cajun and I, Mr. Dr. Fritz, along with Jane Pruth, who I've known my whole career, when I think she was at Hopewell or whatever, coming in here with Dr. Fritz and his staff and the Treasurer staff, and I see Wes is here, I see you guys here. We couldn't have come into a nicer board office. We've done this before, Cajun and I, but it's just, it just makes it even funner when the people are so friendly and willing to help us, because it's just a transitional period for the district. We know you're going to be successful in that process. But in the meantime, this is a big document that's due. And so we just kind of got our feet wet real quick, but we've been doing this a long time, and Jennifer has too. So we're going to go right through it. We've got the handouts. Instead of a slideshow, we're just going to do the handouts real quick, so we can make it go a little faster. But this is the first handout we'll just look at, which is just a recap. Cajun and I do it a little different than maybe you're used to, in the sense we call this more of a community-friendly one. This is what we like to give to people in the community, because it's a little easier to understand than unrestricted grants and restricted. This kind of spells out what the income is here, and we've got different buckets here. I'm going to just take care of the real estate, which is obviously our largest revenue source. Nothing new here. There's an eight percent increase this year. That's a good thing. You guys probably, I'm sure Jane went over this, but you had a very large, significant increase in Lucas County with your reappraisal. And we're going to get into this. Our biggest point here is what's going on in Columbus, because we were heavily involved in what's going on in Columbus. But part of what Lucas County went through, which is what Ottawa County went through, is a large reappraisal value increase. But for Oregon, unfortunately, you probably know this, like the bag of your hand, you're not at the twenty-mil floor. So because you're not at the twenty-mil floor, you don't get that large increase in real estate like a lot, over half the school districts in Ohio got. So in Columbus, there's a lot of churning of different bills that have come out to try and address these large property tax increases that they're getting. But the residents of the school here, we're not really seeing that. However, we do have six inside mills. We won't get into all that, but the point is, because of those six inside mills, which is one of the highest in the state, actually, to have that money, we usually have four or less, we do get growth on those six mills. So when the reappraisal went through, we do get a little, and that's what's leading to some of our increase here on the top line, which is our real estate. So again, why, if you would do the math here, years four, two through five, Cajun and I, we only forecasted a one and a half percent increase. Why? I'm sure I'm not out of line to say Jane's probably conservative, too, just knowing how Jane and I, Treasurers are very conservative. We don't want to put a large increase in there. But in particularly, because Columbus has thirty bills, I think they counted them up, looking to reduce the burden of taxes for Ohio residents, all of which are going to affect the schools, unfortunately. So we're, we'll know in June. We could update this again June thirtieth, it'd probably be at midnight, the way they work in Columbus. But right now, we don't know, so we're very conservative on the out years. So Jeff said we're going to move quick. He's still on the very top line, so I'm going to jump in here and speed it up a little bit. So state funding is our other big revenue source here. So right now, as Jeff mentioned, we're going through a budget process. Governor came out with his version of the budget. The House came out with their version. We have the advantage of knowing where exactly, basically, barring any big changes in EMIS, where exactly we're going to end up state funding-wise. So we have that advantage for this fiscal year. And then Jeff and I examine both the Governor's version and the House version of the budget to give us some guidance over the next two years. And then beyond that, we can all probably just flip a coin and figure out what Columbus is going to do for going up four more years. So that's our recap of our revenue. Just real quick on the expense side... And we'll say one other thing. And again, this is probably a sore subject, but we deal with it in Nuka Power District. You are in the phase out of your tangible personal property, which shows up on our other receipts state, losing at three hundred thousand dollars a year until that finally is wiped out. And that's so painful to see that. Oregon is one of the few districts in Northwest Ohio that's still... That's still receiving, which tells us how much money you would have received back when deregulation happened in two thousand, right? Nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. So it tells us how much money, and that money is still phasing out, and you could see that going out on the forecast as well. That's a set schedule, so we're pretty confident, very confident in those numbers. Couple quick things with the transfers, you'll notice. We are recommending to the board, you know, talk a little bit about severance. You know, in any school district, you may have one person retire this year, or fifteen the next, or twenty. STRs just made some changes, so there's going to be more retirements. What that creates on a five-year forecast is sort of a roller coaster effect. What we were recommending to the board is a steady transfer of, you could see there, five hundred thousand dollars into a severance fund that sets that number, so that the board's not guessing of what that payment could be. You'd have those funds as severances come up. And then if the fund built up, what you could do is not transfer into it, or take a year off, or if your deficit spending even further, that's an area we can look at. It's more of just an accrual way of accounting for things. And again, it just, your salaries and wages could jump up over a million dollars one year because thirty teachers retired. And that's unfair, because that's not really what you're wa, you didn't give that kind of a raise. But if we put it into a severance fund, we put a fixed amount in, just like accrual type of counting, and that's just a best practice. More predictable way to predict our expenses. The other side is, we're also recommending tonight approval of a capital projects fund. Operates very similarly, right, to a PI fund, except if the board ever chose, they could move the money back into the general fund in order to operate with. We're seeing this certainly among more school districts, and we may, you know, the board may have the option to save for the future, for some future capital projects. And we're going to kind of work with the state budget and see what the effects of that. So the House came in, again, I don't, I'm sure Mr. Dr. Fritz emailed you. So it drove us crazy. So we get involved in that, because we're trying to, as Treasurers, we try to advocate for school funding. So the Governor came out with his proposal, you know, to give us X amount of money, but then the House, the last minute, with no testimony, because we're allowed to go and testify and promote, keep the fair school funding formula, all that. The last minute, they threw in there a thirty percent cap on districts, which is red flag here to this district, that if you're, end your year, and if you look down there, you can see what I'm talking about, what kind of dollar figure in that last general fund and cash balance. If it's over thirty percent in that year, they're going to reduce taxes the next year. I just did some quick math. If we transferred out another five million dollars from where we're at today, we'd still be at thirty-four percent. That still wouldn't be enough. Now, so what Cajun, I think, was saying there is that we do have a, in Dr. Fritz's board part, a resolution to create a capital projects fund. So if and when, if the board would so choose, next month, if the legislator comes out and they force us on this thirty percent, which we keep hearing, it's probably not going to stick, because it's so radical of an idea to penalize districts who manage their money well, but it's over thirty percent, we're going to refund that all of the taxpayers. Yeah, it's a good sound to the public, but that's not, that's where it's going to force us to spend money that we probably don't want to spend. Anyway, it's probably not going to stick. However, we need to be prepared, and we want the Board of Education to be prepared. You will have a capital project fund. Why that? Because they're not going to count that towards our thirty percent. They're only going to look at general fund and the balances. So we could move the money with, and I'm sure we have more than enough capital expenditures that we have, but we've never really had to do that. We've just, you've been good stewards here. You can tell by your cash, been very good stewards of the taxpayers' money. But now the state doesn't like that, because they're trying to fix property taxes. And one way they can do it is say, the schools need to give back this excess money. That's one of my proposals, but so, did I cover? Well, in a lengthy way, you did, yes. So and the final point here is, you know, and this is a great opportunity to highlight some of the other funds that school districts have. The general fund, the five-year forecast is only covering the general fund. But we just wanted to note in the back here, you know, where all our athletic accounts were, and this is to begin this current fiscal year. You can see the severance fund that we currently have, only had eleven thousand dollars in it, so that's why we're recommending some of those changes there, or transfers there. PI fund, again, a good PI fund in case a roof or something like that for those necessities. Just to give the boards some background of where we stand in some of our other funds that it takes to operate a school district. So with that, we want to kind of open it up if there are any questions, comments, concerns. Happy to help address those.
Questions from the board? We keep hearing, and I was reading somewhere that it may, that thirty percent may end up being a fifty percent number, as I bet you're all hearing as well.
That's correct, out of the Senate is, yeah, that is correct. Actually, there's a bill today to include not just schools, all public entities. I don't know if you saw it, out of Northeast Ohio, so that's, that was...
I think what our community can be very cognizant of is the fact that this district has been very good stewards of the tax dollars that have been raised over the years. And I think, basically, what you're telling us is the same thing. And hopefully, that we will not be penalized, because we have been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars.
We will plan to be, because we'll be here for the next couple of months, probably, so we'll, and I'm sure Dr. Fritz will be updating you on, you know, but if something, Senate's supposed to come out next week? No, like June, first part of June. First part of June with their proposal, and again, then as it goes, they come out with it, we testify, and then the House and Senate get together, and they're in a conference committee. That is what goes to the Governor, usually on June twenty-ninth to the thirtieth, and he can still line item, veto things. But we'll, we're all going to hold, all Treasurers and Treasurers will be holding our breath this year, because it's just like none others. It's kind of an unusual time right now, so.
Thank you very much for your time and coming in to support us. We have four items for approval under the Treasurers Report. One is the approval of minutes for the April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting, a contract, a one-year contract for compilation of financial statements, this year in twenty-twenty-five, for ninety-nine hundred dollars to Julian and Groobie. Treasurers Report, do you have any other additional things that you would like to add to the five-year forecast?
No, these are things we're doing with all the districts we work with. I know Cajun and Jeff work with several districts as our team, and we're all looking at, do we need to transfer, and what's our cash balance, and how do we protect this district? So I appreciate working with them, and we're happy to be here helping the district.
We appreciate everything that all three of you are doing on behalf of the district. Thank you very much. And the final thing that we're voting on is the presentation and approval of the five-year forecast. Motion, please, to approve the Treasurers Report? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? We're on call, please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Edgerson?
Yes.
Mr. Sabe?
Yes. We will go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting to discuss two areas: the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee, or student, unless the employee, official, licensee, or student requests a public hearing. And then we will also be discussing matters related to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. Consent agenda. We have a lengthy consent agenda item list. Entertain a motion for approval of that consent agenda, please. So move. We have a...
Motion? Second?
Second.
I'm just giving a last look really quick, don't see anything new. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the floor, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. All right, we're going to move on now to new business, graduating seniors, a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. Motion, please?
So move.
Motion on the floor, second.
Second.
Roll call, question, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. Motion to award an honorary diploma for James H. Zettner, and we want to thank Mr. Zettner for his service to our country. I'll ask for a motion in a second, and I'm going to ask for Mr. Eversman to give us a little background on that, please. Motion, please?
Mr. Chairman? President? I'd like to strike the word honorary, because under section 3313.616 on the Ohio Vice Code, we can just award a regular diploma. It may be just symbolic to say honorary, but if by doing that, I'd like to make a motion to award a diploma for James H. Zettner, and we thank Mr. Zettner for his service for our country, but the motion is to award his high school diploma, and I'll speak to that in a second.
Okay, we have, let's, a motion to revise the agenda for this item, so we're going to revise it to a motion to award a diploma for James H. Zettner, thanking him again for his service to our country. Motion, please, for that revision?
Incorporated that, but, okay, yes, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call on the revision, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to have a roll call on the motion to award that diploma for Mr. Zettner.
Yes.
Motion, please?
I'll move. Second.
Okay. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. All right, can you give us a little bit of background, please, Mr. Eversman on Mr. Zettner?
For those in attendance, we have a very special time here before us. In advance of Memorial Day, I discovered that there was a former Clay student, still living, who served in World War II, and upon further investigation, I was told that this gentleman left Clay High School when he was drafted, and he reported for the Army and was inducted in August of 1945, about the third week of that month, and he went off to boot camp. Well, fortunately, in September 2nd of 1945, the Japanese surrendered and the war was officially over. But Mr. Zettner, who is, was raised up in the South Shore Park, Willwind School District, he was sent to Europe and he served in the Army Occupation Forces, and I've had the, and he was honorably discharged, which we have a copy of his discharge papers in there, now on file with the school district, and under the state statute, we can award him his high school diploma. So he may very well be, at age 98, the oldest official Clay High School graduate, if this motion, you know, where we get everything done, which we have. But let me just say that he, an interesting story, and you people that are in education will love this more than, than most, some people may not know. He had to go to summer school while in high school. He went to the old St. Ignatius School, but the church closed the school down when he was in third grade. So then he came into Oregon schools, and when he got to high school, he suddenly was not passing his classes, he, he was failing because he wasn't taking tests, test scores were bad. So he had to go to summer school at Josephine Facet, the superintendent of school, at her home. They did, could you imagine having kids in your home and educate them nowadays? No, but that's what they did. And he said Josephine Facet covered the same material that he was failing these tests, and he recited answers, and she said, well, why are you failing the tests? I don't know. And she says, you know the material. And I had, my wife is a special education teacher, and I take memory of one of the college basketball grades could not pass his classes in college, and he was taking his exams orally given to him, and it makes sense. I don't think that back in 1941, that they had what we now know as special education, you know, where they, we have, there are extra services provided to find out why kids are not learning, and what they can do to help them learn and be better, and boy, if he would have had that. But he did serve for a lot of years under Coach Ted Federici, he was one of the guys that held the down markers, or the first downs stakes in football. So he's no stranger to Oregon, and he's still ambulatory, he still is up always at the VFW in South Shore Park. He's the last surviving charter member when they built that VFW post, and he will be with us on Memorial Day to place the wreath at the World War II memorial. So I invite anyone listening on the line, or later, or any of you folks to come out 11 o'clock on Monday, the 26th. We start at 11, we're done by noon, and we have, Marcy Capter will be here to speak, no politics, but she'll be here to talk about, you know, and she wrote the funding bill for the World War II National Memorial in Washington DC, and it originated at a fish fry in Jerusalem Township, when a veteran Roger Durbin came up to her and said, why isn't there a World War II memorial? So it's a, it's a great story, I'm sure she may touch on it a little bit, but if, you know, I wish all those kids were still here to tell them. It's, and we have, we're very fortunate, thanks to Mr. Pfeiffer, that approximately 10 to 12 National Honor Society students are coming out this year to earn community service hours and help us set it up and tear down and, and get, take care of the senior citizens and make sure if they need a water, or escorts their chairs, or making sure that those, you know, chairs are steady, and then we'll clean the, clean our memorial garden up. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eversman. We have a motion on the floor in a second to award a diploma for James H. Zettner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes, and congratulations to Mr. Zettner, and thank you for all of your service over the many years. Item C under new business memorandum of understanding, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement. Section XXX supplemental positions, section J, Clay High School Athletics Cheerleader Advisor, and Junior High School Athletics Cheerleader Advisor. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. Item D under new business Director of Human Resources Job Description, a motion to approve the job description for the Director of Human Resources. The job description was previously distributed to the board. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. Item E under new business Handbooks, motion to adopt the following handbooks, Eisenhower Intermediate School and Facet Junior High School, drafts were previously distributed to the board. Motion, please?
So move.
Second.
A motion in a second, any questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zettner?
Yes. Item F, 2025-2026 School Calendar, motion to approve the following changes to the 2025-26 School Calendar. Item number one, the language for October 13th will be changed from no school Columbus Day to no school for students. Number two, the language for May 31st Clay High School graduation will be changed to June 7th Clay High School graduation. Motion, please?
So move.
And a second.
And a second? Question, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes. This was discussed in our Treasurers Report. Item G, establishment of a capital projects fund, motion to approve resolution to establish a capital projects fund for the purpose of accumulating resources for the acquisition, construction, or improvement of fixed assets. Motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes, and item H, donations, motion to accept the following donations, for its severance, donated manufacturing, measuring instruments, excuse me, and cutting tools to Clay High School Advanced Manufacturing and Machine Program with a value of $3,895.50. And we received a wonderful outpouring of support from the community for the Clay High School Culinary Food Truck Competition, including Burkett Restaurant Equipment and Supply, Buckhead Meat and Seafood Supply, Foodology, Dairy Depot, KESCO, Mike Armstrong, Hope Community Church, House of Meats on Star Avenue, the Toledo Zoo, Gladio Home Center, Sun Federal Credit Union, Kroger Bank, and Culver's Restaurant. A motion, please, to accept the donations, so noted.
So move.
A motion, second, please?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes, gratitude, thank you all very, very much for your support of Oregon City Schools. Item I, disposal of materials, the district has disposed of three Chromebooks with IDs noted in the agenda. And disposal of equipments, materials, the items listed in the April 15th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Fritz?
Well, a couple of items, and the Treasurers Report kind of stole some of my thunder, which is okay, makes it quicker, but I want to first thank our career students, our career tech students who are here tonight, and the staff, and Becky, and everybody else who's been a part of career tech and working with those students, so to see such great results. I also want to thank our retirees, you know, many years of service to the school district, and to our students, staff, and fellow staff, and our parents and the community, so we want to thank them. Congratulations to our graduates, one of the best experiences in my, no, my school year as a superintendent of the last 15 years, and this being one of them, is the graduation ceremony, seeing kids walk across, or going across the stage. It is a testament to all the hard work and dedication of all the staff here, whether you're food service, whether you're a bus driver, whether you're a teacher, and everybody who works here, the satisfaction of seeing kids walk across that stage and go on to do whatever they want to do, and knowing that we prepared them to do that is very satisfying. I also say, you know, I want to talk just in general about our local report card results from this year. We know some preliminary results, we don't know all of them, but they look very good, and that's very exciting for us, and I'm hoping that our ELA data tomorrow comes back, unofficially, of course, you know, and is good as well, so we'll see where that's at. I won't talk about state budget, state tax legislation, cash balance legislation, that's already been discussed, which is awesome. I will say the calendar item on the agenda is strictly, you know, we had to change graduation date because the venue is not available, you know, on that date, so we had to change that. And the other item is just to try to clarify for some staff that are confused of whether they were working that day, because some thought it was a national holiday, no work for anybody, but it's not, it's not one of the more recognized ones, it's just for certain staff that'll be off that day, so that's the clarification there. That's really my report at this time.
Sounds good. Doctor, any questions for Dr. Fritz?
No, would you just keep the surprise on that governor's thing on the cell phone bill down the road?
Yeah, I did talk to.
We already have a policy.
Yeah, we do have a policy, and I did talk to the legislative liaison for the governor's office in Northwest Ohio area, and I think what really it comes down to is they do not want kids during instructional time using cell phones. I think there's been, you know, some discussion about, and some confusion about whether it's going to, you know, some people believe it was just going to be all day long, that's not the case. I'm a little bit more concerned about what our role in potentially having to take possession of the device, because once you take possession of it, then we're going to be somewhat legally responsible for that in our hands, and thus those $800 devices, right? And you start multiplying that out, and things can add up pretty quickly. So we'll see where that goes. I think we're going to have something, you know, I'm not sure the governor got to where he wanted to with the past policy, but here, it's working. I'm not for negative, I mean, we can, I mean, for the most part, you know, are there isolated issues? I think so. If we can discourage kids from using their phones during the instructional time is the key, as well as, you know, we've got to teach kids to be good stewards of their technology, you know, in the workplace, right? We've got to prepare them for that. They're going to have one of these in their hands, or, you know, in their pockets and so forth. The other question becomes is what about the wristwatch? It's now an Apple Watch, or, you know, that's discussed in there, because they can have that as well, and have to be hooked up to cellular, there's all kinds of other questions related to this moving forward.
And I think if, and God forbid, it never happens in an active shooter situation, or somebody trespassing in the building that is alarm, I mean, they can call 911, so that's what I think about.
Yeah, we have a concern too, you know, I think all of us need to be, and I remember when my kids were in school, in K-12 school, there were times where I wouldn't think, and I would send them a text, and it was at why they were at school.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I spoke to, all right, I listened to a situation today where a fourth grader is texting, you know, their parents off and on during the day, and so we just got to, you know, we've got to get to a sweet spot with this and not have it affect instructional learning.
Any other questions for Dr. Fritz? All right, thank you, Dr. Fritz, for your report and all the great work that you continue to do for this district. I know it's been an interesting first year, so we thank you for all that you continue to do. Any old business for discussion? Board discussion, anything from the board? All right, as mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we will head into executive session now. We will excuse from that executive session and bring the meeting to a close. We thank you all for being here. We have a special meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 5:00, off the top of my head, and then our next regularly scheduled board meeting will, of course, be next Monday, I mean, next month, I should say, and so be sure to check the Oregon Schools website if you have any questions about upcoming meetings and dates. Thank you all for being with us, and again, we will excuse from the executive session.
We need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Thank you for the motion. Thank you for keeping this, as you can tell. So we have a motion in a second on the floor, any question, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?